All meeting to order. Rebecca Williams, prepare for pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please lead us in prayer?
Father Wilder, coming for you today in my name of Jesus, and we just want to thank you for everything that you're doing. Want to thank you for everything that you've done. Father, we ask that you will lead the way now. We ask that you will give us insight and guidance in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Becker. Nita, roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Present.
Counselor Segola.
Here.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A quorum is declared.
And modifications to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we have one modification to the agenda. Under scheduled appearances, we have Richard Nagley with the Veterans Coalition of SLO.
I would move to approve modification to the agenda.
Second.
They moved in second to approve modification to the agenda. Any more discussion? Nita.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda.
And forgive me, where are we putting that?
Uh, we'll put that under scheduled appearances, one B.
Approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting, January twenty first, twenty twenty one. Review with you and approval of accounts payable.
May I should approve?
And moved in second to approve the consent, approval of consent agenda for minutes regular meeting, January twenty first, twenty twenty one. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Nita.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Segola.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carry to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, proclamation, communications and appointments. Who's done out appointment of Ken Hamco to planning and zoning commission and board of adjustment?
Good evening, Council. Um, we received a letter of interest from Ken Hamco. He says, please accept this letter expressing my official interest in a seat on the City of Monovista Planning Commission. I'm always looking for better ways to serve my community. Ken Hamco. Uh, staff would ask that you approve appointing Ken Hamco to the planning commission. He would also serve on the board of adjustment since our planning commission and board of adjustment is the same.
I move to approve appointment of Ken Hamco to the planning commission.
Been moved in second to appoint Ken Hamco to the planning and zoning commission and board of adjustments. Is there any more discussion? Nita.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Ken Hamco to appoint him to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, special presentations. Scheduled appearances in order to be included on this portion of the agenda. You have to follow the appropriate form with city clerk no later than noon on Monday, parents of the meeting. And first one is project update for Sky High. One more in.
Well, thank you, Council, and I ask for, uh, letting us update you on this very worthwhile project. Uh, I'm Carla Schreiber, and this is my partner in crime, Patty Woods, and Brian Cook, who is with Alcon. And we'll have a discussion later on about my project. But we thought we ought to update you exactly where we are on this very worthwhile project. And just out of curiosity, um, I think we have some supporters in the room. You guys want to raise your hands and, and little waves? Yay! It, it's great. But, um, anyway, this project does embody, uh, embody our past. It serves our present, and then it builds our future. Which, um, I think we all understand that. This is definitely a collaboration project between the community and the City of Monovista. And we're, it's just amazing how this community is supporting this project. In fact, I got a call today, another gentleman through his various entities is contributing an additional ten thousand compared to what they've already given. It's just amazing.
And I want to add that it's proof that a small town can do big things. And we're almost there, so I'm so proud of everybody that's been part of this.
And yeah, jump in, this is a great big team. We all need to pat ourselves on the back on this one. But, um, the swimming pool, of course, the demo started in July. And Brian and his team and Jim Wosha went to work with some pretty heavy equipment. And they started then on the multi-use building, uh, about when Sam Pete, actually, I think that was the day Sam Pete should have been. So, uh, brings back lots of memories. Uh, we can show it at the end. Alcon did a really neat video, and I am not technical enough to embody it in the PowerPoint. But we have it. So, uh, but it is brilliant. It's about a minute, but it is an awesome video of the building coming down. Then in August, they started, uh, Brian, you, or, yeah, go to the latest. Be able to tell it better than I.
So, yeah, yeah, some, um, started foundations in August. This is the guys doing foundations. We're starting to put in some of the underground utilities, electrical, uh, water, pipeline, stuff like that. Uh, a lot of dirt in, built that up quite a bit. And so that was that period of time until you could see about mid-October. And since then, up goes with the steel.
That was the first truck that arrived with the steel up in that, up the left side. Coming into the field.
Hi, it's pretty glad to see you.
Mark, Mark Thompson's been managing the project, so he's a lot more familiar with many details of the project, but, uh, we have seven truckloads of steel.
Yeah, at least.
So, um, but anyway, the, the steel started flying, and I think, uh, I'm sure many of you noticed the roof has just started getting buttoned up now. Um, but the steel was pretty complex for that. Pretty special building with yard roof.
And, and we got a couple pictures of that. This, again, this is for our future, and this is what, um, two four-H clubs did as a project to raise funds for this, uh, particular, well, this project. It's just awesome, uh, what everybody's doing. And again, and they're doing it not for us, but they're doing it for them and then their families.
So, yeah, just within the last few days, we finished the roof on the upper portion. I don't know, I didn't get by there today. I know they're real close on the lower portion on the.
They finished it today.
They did.
So the roof's on.
So we have all the roof dams on, the bathrooms have started shaping up. Really starting to take some shape, and.
And I took these inside, just to give you a perspective of how big that facility is. If you'll notice, the pickup's up there, and then the truck, it's sitting, um, between kind of where the division of the comfort center and the event center would be. That's how massive that facility is gonna. Um, again, the community should be very proud of what we've accomplished. We, we've had some challenges, but we're moving forward. Uh, sometimes it feels like we crawl, but yet we've, uh, moved. When you think about, uh, July, where, where we come with the project, it's pretty amazing. And, um, again, we're, it's close, but there's a lot to do. And, uh, we need to thank the community and Council for believing in it and, and letting us move forward with this project. Do you want to try the demo?
Sure. And again, I think this is living proof of what a small town and a committed community can do together. And I just, I think this is a project that is certainly, that is certainly to be, um, applauded by the people wishing that they could do the same thing. So, uh, it takes a village, and this has had the whole village and the City of Monovista behind it. So, again, thank you, everybody.
Might be a little tough to see, but you can see all the cables going off across the road. And, uh, we have, uh, four or five large pieces of equipment in the parking lot across the street. Four on that.
There it is, that old building, the floor, right?
Yeah.
Carla and I looked at each other later that day and said, um, this just got real.
Yeah. No going back now.
No going back.
And, and what was amazing, there was no damage to the grandstands, and, and really, the debris in the street was very, very minimal. I think the showroom was back open within, what, an hour and a half, two hours. It, it was awesome.
Can we watch that again?
You got more power than I do.
Like all the power.
Yeah.
One more time, it's only maybe.
That was, that was good stuff.
That was an amazing morning, I can tell you that. I was out there when we started doing that. What, I'm gonna throw in, they cleaned that whole building out? But when that building hit the ground, there were volleyballs flying out of there. The guys that were in the heavy equipment were like, what on earth is coming across here? I got one at home, we need to raffle, we need to raffle the, ah.
And, uh, you know, Jim Wosha, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Jim Wosha was, was, uh, kind of our lead for the demo project, and we need to thank him and, um, what's that, Adrian? Adrian Asmeyer, and in Rio Grande County, they provided the dozer and a street cleaner. It's just amazing how this community has come together, uh, to make this facility, uh, and project a reality. That's what we have for an update, and we'll, we can talk later during the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Thank you, all you guys. Brian Martin, Kathy, thank you guys too. Okay, Veterans Coalition.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Richard Nagley. I'm the founder and president of the Veterans Coalition of the San Luis Valley. We are a veteran service organization that has become the primary, uh, point of contact for all things veteran in the valley. We always have the veteran service officers. They're functionally self-veterans in fighting claims, but what has happened, uh, in, in the San Luis Valley because of our rural area. We have a VA clinic that is, uh, marginal at best, and it doesn't have the ability to serve all the veterans in the valley. And as a result, the VA has a system that allows veterans to go to non-VA providers. But a lot of veterans don't understand that having been in the service, you've earned benefits. You're not taking away anything from anyone else. So Coalition grew out of a need to communicate to veterans about benefits and what, uh, what can be done, again, is, was just shown in a small rural community, everyone pulling together. Ten percent of the valley's population are veterans. Ninety-nine percent of the valley's population are related to one. I often ask for show of hands, how many veterans do you have? Do we have in the room, please? How many are related to a veteran? It's, it's hard to find somebody that doesn't. The Coalition grew, as I say, out of my pocket. I do not get paid, I fund it, I work about thirty hours a day, eight days a week. And, uh, or at least that seems that way. Even when I turn off my phone, I, people find me walking down the street or, and they have to say, oh, I, I got a question. I won't say that it's happened a couple of times already in this room, but it's already happened a couple of times in this room. So, what we need is for our elected officials and our community elected officials to know that we exist and help get the word out to the veterans in the community. We have been working, uh, over these last, mm, twelve years or so. With, I think we have about ten veterans actually in Monovista that we have been working with, and they have had all sorts of issues. We are not, uh, a funded organization that can actually fund veterans. We don't have money to pay rent and things like that. But we know the organizations that do. As a result, we refer the veterans to, uh, those organizations, for example, like Volunteers of America, which is an organization that helps veterans that are either homeless or about to be homeless. So we work with them, uh, here in the valley, and occasionally, uh, they will take a veteran from La Puente and find them temporary housing. And temporary means six months, where, like a carment or something like that. And we're usually the ones that transport them here. So we'll pick them up in La Puente with their stuff. And, and bring them up. So what we're asking for is any assistance that you might be able to provide. We know that you have been very, uh, supportive of Brothers Keepers, who adopted us a few years ago, and is continue to help fund us to keep our doors open. So, uh, anything that you can do will help. As a result, we're asking, uh, if you could, for three thousand dollars, uh, toward peer-to-peer support for veterans in crisis. And, uh, we have hopefully our forms in order. And, uh, anything you can do, we would appreciate. Question?
What is peer-to-peer support for veterans, and what does that entail and what costs?
Uh, the peer-to-peer support is a veteran comes, and at this point, pretty much links up with me. Every veteran has a story. We want to know what their needs are, what their issues are. We create a file. We work with them from that day, and, uh, we will work with them to close the circle, that is, if they give an appointment with someone, we don't tell them, oh, here, call this number, go get an appointment. We work with them to get the appointment. We follow up with them to see that they got the appointment. We follow up with them to see that they've got the information taken care of. There's no charge to them, and since I'm the one that's the primary peer advocate and, and peer member, at least until it begins to be part of the follow-up process, uh, I don't get paid, so it's what, what we do. There is a formal program that the VA has developed called Peer-to-Peer or Mentoring, uh, in the areas of healthcare, suicide prevention, et cetera. And, uh, they would like us to take the course. We just don't have time, and we don't have manpower to do that. The, as many of you know, if I can kind of give you an example. Suicide in veterans is a serious issue. Colorado ranks about fifth in the nation in suicide overall. Veteran suicide in the nation is at like nineteen percent. That's about twice that as much as suicide in, in the state. San Luis Valley is higher than that. So, in twenty fifteen, the VA started doing research on veteran suicide and actually came to the San Luis Valley to ask if we would be the office site, meaning the, the very first site, to try to get an understanding of why veterans were committing suicide, what it meant in the community, for example, the stigma of a car sitting in front of mental health. Obviously, who sits in front of mental health? People that have problems. And, uh, so we've worked with the VA, the, uh, logo that was created and, and the template of the organization of the Veterans Coalition of San Luis Valley. The VA took after a year and a half to Montana, created the Veterans Coalition of Northeast Montana, then North Carolina, then Northeast Colorado. And this, at this very moment, they're opening the sixteenth Veterans Coalition in Alaska. So, the Veterans Coalition brand, working with Together with Veterans, or creating Together with Veterans, is the name of the program. It's on nationwide. Last year, the President created a program called Prevents. The President's wrote that on, it's afternoon, suicide prevention, et cetera. The Together with Veterans program is a cornerstone in that national program that was signed into law by the President. We also had the Secretary of the VA come and make a presentation to Coalition, uh, through work that we've done. So, actually, Washington DC knows where the San Luis Valley is. Knows where veterans are in the San Luis Valley. And, uh, we can provide the Council with additional information, if you'd like, about the number of veterans in the county, the funds, the breakdowns, and things like that. These, these are all, this data all comes from the VA. So it's not our in-house guest information. Uh, what we're trying to do is have each one teach one and bring back to veterans what we learned when we were in the service of Michael Buddy system. Take care of your own, take care of yourself, be there for a brother's sister.
Uh, Mr. Nagley, I would love to make a quick comment about, uh, what's been going on. I don't know, most people are familiar with bureaucracies and the challenge of dealing with the state or federal government or whatever, and Veterans Administration, of course, is, is way at the, the, at the peak of that in terms of dealing with, uh, situations, getting things done, fighting it right through the backlog. Uh, you alluded to this operation, Together with Veterans, that kind of sprang out of the San Luis Valley Veterans Coalition, and, uh, was involved with, well, several different Zoom conferences and meetings, but this most recent one, Philip, by the name of Chris Holly, was, was there, and he was bragging about how he had cut through all the backlog. And, uh, about five or six people spoke up from different points around the country in this Zoom meeting. And so, well, wait a minute, I got this problem, and, and I didn't say anything, but I knew that I had an issue that I needed to get submitted to him. I did that test, I got the information from Captain Hurd here in town, uh, via his, his wife, and, uh, sent that information in, and it was like less than a week. I don't think it was any more than a week later. Got a response back from him, and he's, and he's working with all of the different agencies and getting things coordinated. And this came from the, uh, from Captain Hurd's, had a, uh, an online interview with somebody that's trying to, you know, just make the, the next steps to getting the benefits that he's due, uh, taken care of. And I, I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to mention that. I'm just amazed at what, because of your input, because of your recommendation, because of some of the work you've done, things like that are actually happening and getting done, and veterans' needs are getting taken care of. And what I would like to do, if, uh, this was all part of the, uh, program, I think, I believe the, uh, Brothers Keepers are here?
Yes.
As are. If it's the right time and place for that. Uh, you had mentioned the figure that you had in mind. We had set aside originally five thousand, and, uh, if, uh, what I would, if I'm not mistaken, the, uh, request on your behalf is, is three thousand, and I believe with the Brothers Keepers is the other two thousand. Exactly. So, I move to award three thousand to the Veterans Coalition and, and two thousand to the Brothers Keepers, uh, as part of this process that's been going on for a while, uh, of the five thousand that's been set aside, uh, to be granted to these organizations.
Mayor Becker, I would just like to say that Brothers Keepers would like to be on the next agenda because they have members that would like to be present.
Okay.
Do you want to, want to delay that, or do you want to? I mean, I could amend that.
We'd like to just do a presentation about what our proposal is for that funding.
Okay.
And, but, uh, we're gonna move forward with it, but we'll be back to do a formal presentation.
So, if you want, I can delay the motion until then, or we can award the funds now. Any comment?
Well, I, I think that if they, if they want to conduct a new presentation, number one, they deserve the opportunity to do that in the way that they want to.
Sure.
And, and, um, and awards should be given or, or, or not, or what it was decided at that point. For that one, I don't think that we should start giving out awards with people that obviously are very competent and they're passionate about what they do, but they're not ready to present yet. And they deserve their day, but be heard.
You want to, want to just do that? That's fine with me. I'll, I'll withdraw the motion, we'll do that at the next meeting. You want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. That was a good presentation. Okay, we're gonna move to citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please let in the comments for three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You need to vote on the three thousand dollars for the Veterans Coalition.
No, you're, you're. Go to the election.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're just.
Counselor Johnson, put through his motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On the next meeting, which is February, you know, eighteenth. Eighteenth, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now, citizen comments.
Hello, Mayor, Council, everyone. I'm Margot Alexander, and I had a couple of concerns. A while back, we had a zoning on the churches and commercial areas. We were supposed to have, I thought, a, say, the open forum to discuss it in February. Whatever happened to that? Or the issue itself? Did it, what happened to the zoning for the churches? Was it just dropped? Uh, because I've had people ask me, pastors and congregation people.
Margot, we, uh, were asked to just recommend to just drop it temporarily or, or some time, because we got some other issues going on. because we got some other issues going on, but it went back to the original state that it was in.
Okay.
When all, when it all came to play, to be in the beginning, it went back to original state.
Okay, thank you for that because, like I said, people have asked me and I didn't know. I kept waiting for something in the paper to let us know what's going on. And it would be nice if maybe something would come out so people would know what's happening on this very important issue.
Well, you can definitely let all the ministers and pastors and God that we're not shutting any churches down and there's no Antichrist in the valley, we're standing strong for God, okay?
I think that's a great way to stand. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that influence. And I just have a question, why has City Hall been closed for two months when everything else in town is open? And was there an outbreak of COVID or something in the building? I'm just curious.
The last meeting that we had, Forrest did make the statement that the City Hall is going to be open on February.
I missed that. Why was?
February first.
February first.
Yeah.
Okay, I must, I'm sorry, I missed that. Why ask questions? Okay. And I guess that's it. You know, try and keep up the good work and we have to stick together and yay for money. I mean, it's moving along. And, and you know, I know you guys are all new, well, happy, let's put it this way, but you're learning. And I'm, I'm excited that you are learning and knowing the ins and outs. It always takes a while when you're new to come into something like this. So, thank you for the job you've done.
Thank you, Margot. Any other citizen comments? You know it's coming. Rebecca?
No.
Ellen? I don't like it when you girls sit up.
Do you have to go to the podium to ask the question?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
It's really silly, I'm just, I'm Gina Bolzenga, I run Clint East. I'm wondering if they still want their, their money and want to vote on it tonight? That's all? And I, I just, it was an idea, did they not get their money since they're here and they presented? Or am I out of bounds? I don't know.
So, we've pulled the motion to move it to when the other presentation comes. And in a sense, they're tied together.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, just given the, so we have the whole presentation, of course.
Awesome. I just want to make sure you don't not take care of your holo. Thank you.
If there's one thing we don't do here, just forget about veterans.
Okay. I knew that, but thank you. Oh. Am I supposed to speak still? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, our public hearings. Mike, you going to be running this one?
I suppose.
Okay. Special review use for accessory dwelling unit? To present.
Well, let me, let me just for the record, say that we, the city council will act as a planning and zoning commission tonight. And this is a special review for property located at two thirty-five Stello Street here in Modavista. The public hearing is at, what's that? The public hearing is set for six o'clock today. Purpose is to review evidence, take testimony from the applicant, Gina Bolzenga. May not get that right. And she's requesting that she turn an existing garage into an accessory dwelling. Apparently, the garage has electricity and running water already, and the property is owned residential low density. Looks like the staff has reviewed the application and is going, is recommending approval. But we probably need to take some testimony and evidence here, so let's start out with Nita as a clerk. She's got a little bit of a presentation, an overview of what we're doing here.
Good evening, Council. So, before you is a special review use for the property located at two thirty-five Stello. Applicant is Gina Bolzenga. She's requesting for an accessory dwelling. The garage currently has water and sewer and electricity to it. She did fill out all the proper paperwork that was required. Electricity, water and sewer already exist. She was, she's asking to build walls and a bathroom for her mother and possibly rent in the future. This will add value to the property. Time scheduled is she's wanting to do this as soon as it's approved. This is the current layout of the property. The garage is located over here. She does have a parking area. This is what the inside of the garage would turn into, bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, living area, and a closet. This is the property. We posted the property twenty-one days out. All property owners within three hundred feet did receive a letter within fifteen days of today. This is the property. And this is the garage, correct? Gina?
Uh, yes. Yes, that's the garage.
And that's where they've taken the garage doors off there. Recommendation, staff would recommend that council approve the special review use application with the condition that the parking remain in the designated parking area according to the applicant's drawing. And from that, I will go back to the drawing and let Ms. Bolzenga.
All right, why don't we call the applicant, Gina? Give me your name again.
Bolzenga, Gina Bolzenga.
Bolzenga, all right.
Yes, sir.
If you want to come on up and just state your name for the record and that you are the applicant here, and generally describe what you'd like to do.
All right. Hi, I'm Gina Bolzenga. I am the applicant here asking for the property at two thirty-five Stello to be able to allow me to build this little structure in the garage. Not asking to like build walls, move anything, the parking area is perfect. Just need a little space for my eighty-year-old mother. So, that's, what questions can I answer?
Are you going to, when do you start construction, do you think?
Immediately, as soon as we can, I'm pretty sure. I've already kind of done what I can do without approval, so we're ready to get it finished up.
Okay, and you've got a contractor and things like that?
I do.
Okay. And what would be your future use of the property, just so the board has an idea?
Honestly, for my mother or myself to move out there. My, I live with my mother inside the property right now, so I would like to have a little more space. In the future, I don't know, as I mentioned, she is eighty, so I would rent it if it were a possibility and a legal thing for me to do.
Okay. I don't know if any of the council has questions. What we'll probably do is see if there's any folks that are, you know, would, would recommend approval from the audience or, and then we'll take some testimony from folks that may be in opposition. I don't know if there are any, but we'll do that kind of a procedure. Do any of the council members have any questions of Ms. Bolzenga?
Question, just, from what it appears in your drawings, there's little, like, any modification to the exterior. With the possible exception of where the garage doors are, I would assume that would be panelled over or something. Otherwise, the exterior is unchanging, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
New doors and windows.
That'll work.
Yeah. It'll be better.
Yeah.
Is it going to be a one or two bedroom?
One.
One bedroom, okay. All right. Well, I think we'll, I don't know, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? If we'll, if you'd go on up and state your name, and then we'll let Gina step down for a minute.
Hi, I'm Scott Deacon. I have a residence at two forty-four Tindall, which is across the alley. And I know they were this, they, I've noticed the improvements and the people that owned it before, it was bad news. And I applaud these people for doing what they're planning to do.
Sorry.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor? All right, you can state your name up there for the record and then just let us know what you're thinking.
Name's Ronny Yeo. I'm the handyman that's helping her out there with it. And I looked over the structure of the building and everything, and it's pretty sound. I believe it started off as a garage and then went into a workshop. That's why it does have water and plumbing in it. And it has a sound foundation, so.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, I don't see anybody wishing to do that, so why don't we close this hearing? Turn it over to the board for action if they so desire.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the application if I knew who we were. That would be the planning and zoning?
No, actually, the city council. So, the reason that the scheme before you had set up the planning and zoning is because of some COVID-related concerns that it affected the planning and zoning commission's ability for the two of them to meet. We now have three commissioners, but because these applicants have been waiting for a while, it's all been more efficient just to bring it to the city council. Since the planning and zoning commission is only a recommending body and you are the final deciding body in this, we just kind of shorted that because we weren't sure we could actually get them to compete. Hopefully, we kind of worry, but we don't know yet.
In that case, I am going to approve the application as presented for two, two thirty-five Stello.
And moved in second to approve the application of special review use for two thirty-five Stello. Is there any discussion?
Nita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the special review use at two thirty-five Stello for Gina Bolzenga.
Okay, I guess we can go into the second public hearing. And this has to do with property located at sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue here in Modavista. It's a public hearing to review evidence and take testimony from the applicant, Neil Gatrell. He's requesting to open a four-by-four repair shop. Apparently, the building was a garage in the, in the past and is equipped for a repair shop. It is a special review within the Commercial Highway Zoning District. Looks like staff has found that the application is complete and is recommending approval. Letters have gone out as required to the neighborhood. And so, I think, Nita, why don't we start out with you as a city clerk and give the board here an overview? The city council is, is actually going to be acting again as a planning and zoning commission.
Hey, before you is a proposed development for a repair shop or special review, special review use. Applicant is Neil Gatrell at sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue. Mr. Gatrell did fill out all the proper paperwork. Mr. Gatrell does not currently own the building. The building is owned by Elizabeth Glover, she goes by Jill. You have a copy of the warranty deed that was supplied by the applicant and a letter from Ms. Glover stating that they are in the process of purchasing the building and she gives them permission to move forward with the special review use. This is the current building, kind of flipped around here. So, this, the repair shop, if you know where Big John's Furniture Warehouse used to be, that's, this is the building. So, actually, the repair shop is on the west or the east side of the building and then the storage would be on the west side of the building. Building was vacant, they plan to use it for a repair shop for four-by-four repairs, upgrades and modifications. They plan on opening in the public, opening to the public in March and hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM. Sign was posted twenty-one days prior to the meeting. This is the location that the repair shop would be in. This is the center of the building. And they have declared that in the future, they would like to also put retail shops inside the building within the middle section of the building. And then at that end of the set, the building, they would like to use that for storage. Again, this is some of the vehicles that they will be working on. Staff has reviewed the application and has found that they fall within the guidelines of the Monmouth Municipal Code under the Commercial Highway Zone District. The current structure already has existing water sewer and is located within and is equipped with the bays for the repair shop and room for rental shops, retail shops, and storage area. The applicant has met all the standards in Article twelve of the Monmouth Municipal Code. Applicant has submitted a document with the intention to use the building for a repair shop, retail, and storage. Staff recommends approval on the special review use with the following conditions. Prior to opening, the property transfer be completed. If storing vehicles outside, applicant must comply with Section twelve seventeen eighty B, which is a fencing regulation in our code. No junkyard allowed.
All right, is Mr. Gatrell here?
Yes, sir.
If you want to maybe get up to the podium and state your name and generally let the board know what you're going to be doing there, okay?
Um, so, that's a great line. So, I'm James Gatrell, you know what everybody else calls me. I've met a few of you, you know, that we work with, Kerry Gillett, he's a watch, he's a Jeep rescue. He owns all the antique Jeeps that are out front. We've done recovery for him for quite some time. We'll be featuring some of his, you know, historic vehicles in prior service. So, we'll actually have a few of his vehicles out front. We do plan on doing four-wheel drive builds, repair, like, we have an alignment rack, we have a great way. We have a, like, a bunch of, like, that kind of equipment. A little background on me, I did this in North Carolina for fifteen years, so this was my first career around. We really want to kind of open up that building, it's been a bit of an eyesore. I mean, going back to, I've not been the best owner. We didn't actually get a great buy on the building, but we really do want to buy the building. We'd like to get the city involved, we'd like to, you know, have the eyes to actually paint the ends of the building and kind of reface it, make it look a little better. And it sits there right as soon as you walk in mind this, but it's, it doesn't put our best foot forward. Tammy and I have a YouTube channel, we've done a pretty good deal. I mean, we've gotten two major trips this year that were actually fully sponsored. We have ties across the entire four-wheel drive community nationwide. We actually brought chapstick and business parts for the girls, get us up, make sure you get chapstick.
Oh, I just want to clarify, when he says the high school to paint, we thought it would be a really cool idea because it's kind of like the first thing you see when you come in Montevista, that end of the building. Like, maybe, like, the senior art class come into a mural or do the other side where that little park is. I think it would be cool to have a big crane scene or.
I was hoping you were going to say something like that.
Yeah.
Something that says welcome to Montevista.
Something that shows what Montevista's allowed.
Yeah. Something other than this giant, right? It's really honestly, it's been a lot for us. I mean, the building needed, literally twice what we expected it. We had a business in center, we were pretty comfortable there. We lost that property literally due to no fault of our own. I mean, the property owner wasn't keeping up on the payments and didn't tell us. So, we literally had. So we literally had two weeks to find a place. This became available. Jill had finally sorted out all of her tax issues and we've paid some of her back bills and, you know, we've done what we can do to kind of make this work. The building has been a garage twice. You know, it, I, I feel like a lot of people have a fond memory of that. Not only that, like Terry's, a good thing going there is Swatch. We'd like to pull him down here a little bit and get some of that in Montevista. Same thing with like our YouTube and our social media and our following there. We'd like to start bringing some of the people into this area. Just kind of spur some economic development, you know, and, and kind of open up the trails. We have a great presence from here in Montevista. We'd like to open up that and kind of bring people into this area. You know, it's, the building's just too big for one business. You know, we have a, we have a machine shop that's already ready to move in. We're waiting on the approval from you guys to, to put a machine shop in there. We have another fellow that, that buys and sells used parts that's ready to rent inside space. Same deal. He's waiting on our approval to be able to use the building to move in. So we're not going to be housing just one business. We'd like to actually house, you know, over the course of the next year, we'd like to house probably three, four, maybe even five. Over the course of the next five years, we would like to turn that into ten and then kind of make that a community space where, you know, the park's right there. So it would be great for people to go, maybe grab a cup of coffee, grab a sandwich, walk over to the park and sit down and enjoy the park. You know, you guys have done a lot of work. That park is beautiful. You know, we'd like to create a, a more centralized shopping location. I know you women are thrilled about getting your oil changed. You know, so it would kind of give us a chance to get the guys in, get the oil changed. While they're getting their oil changed, they'll have a retail space where they can, you know, maybe find a consignment shop or grab a sandwich or a cup of coffee or, you know, who knows? We're, we originally budgeted, we originally thought we were going to have enough money to have this all wrapped up in the next six months. But honestly, with the amount of work that that building needs, it's probably going to be the next year. So, do you guys have any questions for us?
Do you have any, do you anticipate having employees or are you folks running it yourself?
I currently have two employees now and we would like to actually add more employees to that list.
And what would you do with, like, if you're working on four or five vehicles? Would they be parked outside, inside? What do you think?
So basically, we don't park anything out front until it's done. So when it's ready to be picked up, that's where we put it outside. Anything that's waiting to be worked on, we have that large inside storage space at the inside. So we want to keep that stuff inside. I, I kind of, I feel like that building's been an eyesore long enough. I don't want to make that any worse. We really would like to reface the front of the building and kind of brighten up the look a little bit. You know, kind of, again, it kind of abused the park because it's right there next to us. We also, like I said, we, we mentioned that whole area. This whole area is wide open, so we can park, I could probably fit thirty vehicles inside of there. Yeah, it's huge. The, the inside retail spaces.
And he, we would like, like Terry Swatch, he has all those Jeeps outside. When you're coming into Swatch, he has like a little museum. We would like to bring them and park them outside as like a cool thing to see when you come into Montevista. These are like cool Boulder, Willy's Jeeps and some military Jeeps that he has just to, to make it look cool when people come in. Because when people see those Jeeps, they're stopping by.
Yeah, they do stop. I mean, anybody that's ever seen a Willy sitting on the side of the road, you always have that, you know? I wonder what's going on with that. You can see the four-wheel drive is actually one that we custom built. It was just at Montevista trade show. Scott stopped in our shop. He's seen some of my work firsthand. He'll tell you, we specialize in quality.
You folks wouldn't be doing any salvage or anything like that, right?
When we get a vehicle that's for salvage per se, generally speaking, the body is completely rotted away. So when we bring that in, it literally, if you could show the other end of the building. Uh, keep going, keep going. Right there. Okay, so this area is actually a separate bay. So anytime we buy a vehicle that we plan on dismantling, it goes directly in that bay. We get what we're going to get off of it and then it goes straight down for scrap. I don't want a junk bill, like, I don't want a bunch of junk cars sitting out front of my bay. It's hard for me to build a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour when it looks like a junkyard. I mean, that's, so we keep that all in this one area. It's roughly the size of this room. We'd like to put shelves in there and, and we'd like to offer used parts, but I just don't have the space nor do I have the desire to warehouse a bunch of our sealed vehicles.
Do any of the council have questions of Mr. Goodrell? I'm just happy to see something go in there. This looks like what you're describing. A kind of business that is not suited to this area, but will last a while. We've had a lot of businesses come and go and it sounds like you have good intentions of
We hope.
of dressing it up too, so.
It's been a nightmare so far, to be honest with you. I mean, the big John, when he left, with plumbing out of the wall, the, the electricity was a disaster. I had an electrician that literally spent two weeks in there every night after work trying to straighten out the electricity in that place. We originally budgeted, you know, half of what we actually ended up spending. We're fifty thousand dollars into that building just to make it safe. You know, it, it's been abused long enough. It's, it's an eyesore as soon as you're pulling it down. We really would like to create, like, I can't really, I don't want to create a museum, but I would certainly like to have a couple of Jeeps there that, that make people want to stop in Montevista. Crane Festival, like, you know, we would, we would really like to become a part of the community. I mean, we've gotten to know Scott and there's quite a few faces here that we've actually gotten to know. We would like to bring something positive to Montevista. And, and we love Montevista too, so. We've only been here about a year, but in the year that we've been here.
We're all from the East Coast and the mountains are home.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Scott, I guess, if you're up?
Hi, I'm Scott Deacon once again, and I'm also the new elected Rio Grande County Commissioner for District One. And I've visited with these guys and they're one of my passions because as most people know me, I love hot rods and, and that kind of stuff. And these people are right up that alley and they're, they got some good plans, four-wheel drive stuff, and I think it will fit in good with the community. And I'm glad to see that they picked us instead of somewhere else. And I just, I'm real in favor for them.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
I'm just a citizen here, but I drive past that place every day. And to see that there's activity and something positive going in, thank you, Lord. So good luck to you and I'm all in favor. Thank you.
I'm Jim Clare and I was at the chamber, I'm a chamber, on the chamber board. And Neil came into the chamber one day and approached us. And after a long conversation, we feel that this is going to be something great for the area, the community. What we're looking at, it's a possibility of bringing in new money. It's a specialized trade, something that's nowhere in the valley. And he can bring people in not only from the state, but out of the state. He has connections in the western half of the United States. They're way, they're all way back to Moab, Utah, places like that, Rock Crawler, stuff like that. So we're in favor through the chamber of promoting him. And also, he came to our chamber meeting the other morning to do a presentation. And he talked about one of his coffee shops. And somebody at the chamber says, I want to talk to you after this. I'm interested. So we've got other people interested in what's going on there and they want to be a part of it. So I think it's going to be a good deal and help promote some economy in Montevista. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
My name is Tammy Forsythe. I'm Neil's partner. So somebody on, I just wanted to share with you, somebody on the Monty just, um, community awareness support group, they were asking about what's going on there. And a couple of people, I just want to pull it on, said she's so excited. Thank you for bringing the building up to light. I remember one with an old pull-up. And then another woman says she sounds like it's a great place to be making. And we're both very avid jeepers. We have lots of Jeep friends, Jeep family. It's a big Jeep community. And you guys know, the Jeep community is very close. But we also would like to bring our friends here and take them to the sand dunes, take them to elephant locks. We also want to promote Tread Lightly, to do classes, recovery classes, how to wheel properly, how to recover your vehicle safely. And we would open this up to the community. How do you put your Jeep in four-wheel drive? Anyway, Neil is, um, he's a, he's a very passionate person about what he does. And he likes to bring that passion to the whole community. Anyway, and I have chapstick. It's not a pride. This is my co-host, chapstick.
That's less than fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
Why does that book is pretty expensive?
This is my, I have a YouTube channel.
All right.
Thank you.
And I've already been telling people about Montevista on my YouTube channel.
Well, while that's going, can I ask you a quick question? I, I didn't think about it for a while, but you have events in mind for four-wheel drive?
We'd like to, so what we'd like to do is actually establish a relationship with the forestry service. Montevista has, like, I don't know if you've ever looked at the off-road map of this area. So any road created prior to nineteen seventy-one cannot be closed. Doesn't matter what B.O.M. wants to do, doesn't matter what, at the end of the day, the federal law is any road created or established and there's any true track that was created prior to nineteen seventy-one cannot be closed. Well, if you happen to look around Montevista, almost all of our trails, like, well, like a quick number is there's roughly ninety percent of our trails were created prior to nineteen seventy-one. So we actually have a very intricate trail area right around here. If anybody, I don't know if you guys ride side-by-sides or do any hunting or, okay. So all of those roads are safe. One of the problems that are happening in Denver is a lot of those trails are getting closed or they've come under fire. The reason why is because nobody has, has gotten involved. We want to do a preemptive thing. We'd like to reach out to forestry service and say, okay, how can we help you maintain these trails? How can we help you clean up these trails? How can we make these trails safer for hunters, fishers, people that enjoy four-wheel drive, stuff like that? So really what we want to do is just open up that area and kind of see what moves in. Tammy and I have a YouTube channel. We've, like I said, we took two major trips this last year. We did the Trans-American Trail, which literally starts in North Carolina, goes all the way to California. That was a fully sponsored ride. Like, we, we literally, Tammy went out. We got a whole bunch of people from across the entire United States and gave us money to do that. And directly following that, we went down to, was it King End or was it Mojave Road? Mojave Road. So in Southern California, we went down to Mojave Road and we did that trip. Each of those times, people that have followed us on YouTube or people that have followed us in the community got together, met us there and did those trails with us. We want to bring that here.
That's what I'm getting at, is to bring all these people from around the country to certain events or whatever. That helps build the community and it obviously would be good for your, your business, but I was just curious.
And since Mojave is having issues with their Easter Jeep, I mean, maybe I just took a new Easter Jeep Safari.
And, and that's the thing, like, we have the potential here to do an event like that. I, I, I don't know that I'm the guy for that. Like, I, oh, I would like to create the place. I would like to create the environment. I would like to work with forestry to make it happen. And I think we're in the best position we could be to make something like that happen. Will it happen? I don't know. But as Tammy mentioned, there are a lot of places, like, the Rubicon Trail has, has come under fire. Moab is completely closed down for the second year in a row. Nationwide, we are struggling to have available trails. And here in Montevista, one thing we have, plenty of available trails. So I, I feel like it would be a good situation for everybody involved.
Let me see if there's any, is there any folks in opposition to this, this application? Okay, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It sounds very exciting. And I guess now that the council has been bribed with the chapstick, I'll turn it over to you guys for both.
I have police officers too and they pull me over.
Good job, chief.
I, I'd like to move that we approve sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue, their special review use. Get this thing on.
It's been moved in second to approve the special review use for a repair shop at sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue. Is there any more discussion?
Nita, in the staff's proposal, it said comply with ordinance twelve dash seventeen dash eighty B, which is not in my book. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
I sure can. Sorry, it's on the other computer.
No problem.
So that is a requirement that if they have junk vehicles, that they build that fence. It's a setary fence with like a covered fence for any junk vehicles that would be stored on the outside.
Is there, what's, is there like dimensions of the fence? Is it like, you know?
It's an eight-foot tall fence. And I can supply that information to the applicant.
And I would commend you on your business plan. You look at Alamosa, and there's two or three different off-road four-wheel drive places. You go to South Fork, you can swing a dead cat, hit Tenham. You know, I think that you're in the right area and I think that that's something that this area as, as an amateur four-wheeler, just getting into it. I would.
This is what it actually is.
Okay, thank you. Commit your business plan and hope that you are able to achieve your goals.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea as well.
Thank you.
And the fact that, to me, the fact that you want to work with the forest service and then teach people proper off-roading so they don't just go out and tear stuff up, that's a really great idea.
I must say that I, um, Pat and I got the opportunity to meet Neil and Tammy at the chamber meeting that morning and we, they actually gave us a tour of the facility. Very impressed with what we saw in there. Very impressed with how neat it was. There were, you know, there were some little projects going on, but it was extremely neat, extremely well kept on the inside. Everything was part well on the outside. So we decided to go and have a meal together. And the energy from the two of the, these two people and just their plans and their outlook and everything was, I was very impressed, very, very impressed. And so I've been anxious for them to come for council.
Nita?
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion to approve, motion is carried to approve the special review use for Goodrell at sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue for a repair shop.
God, I wouldn't have to do this, huh?
That's kind of like when Sky Park came over. Get you on.
I, I honestly, between the trade show and keeping up the four-wheel drive shop, I don't think I've slept in today.
Roll the rest.
Yeah, I'm about to flip over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean you have to leave right now. It means tonight, you won't have to. Please stay the rest of the week.
Medical license for evolution, contact agreements and leases, contact with Alcon for Sky.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. So you have a thin set of documents in front of you this evening. Two AIA documents, A one thirty-three dash two thousand nine and A one thirty-three two thousand nine exhibit A. And we'll give you a little background of what this is all about. And we'll give you a little background of what this is all about. We certainly have our representative at Sky High who can ask us, I've answered some of the questions you have, but what it's about is four million, four hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. And that is essentially the second half of the Sky High project. Now, why do we have a separate contract and separate, second half of the project? Because, as you all may recall, we have a one million dollar grant from DOLA. And DOLA's rules are a little bit different than our rules. And also, when we awarded it, so DOLA said, we will provide a million dollars in matching funds, and we will match four million, four hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. That's the million that goes towards it, right? So that's the maximum contract amount that they will reimburse towards. The contract can be for more, could be for less. So basically, they're taking a percentage of reimbursement. So bill requirements or draws need to look like all those things in sort of what's in this contract as far as exhibits and stuff. So bill requirements are a little bit more stringent than, you know, what we've been following with the fundraised funds that we have, but we're trying to, Sky High have done a great job putting together the funding. But now we're down to the part where we have two components of funding that are different. One is the money of DOLA, and the other is, as you all recall, you pass the ordinance to do a lease purchase project with San Luis Valley Federal Bank. So we haven't closed the SLB Fed Bank lease purchase yet, that's in the process of being reviewed. As you all recall, we have one council on that, from Cookdak Rock, and they're working with us in the leather right now, and we also have a grant agreement with the Alcon validation. So those parts will come in the next probably two weeks, probably next council meeting, where you will have those, since there's no particular issues other than aggregation of documents, always fun to do with banks. Anyway, so at this point, though, we're at a bit of a crossroads in the project, where if you've driven by there lately, see the roof's closed in, metal's up, a lot of things are going on, and we're at the point where this, this money becomes necessary to keep the project moving forward. So for you tonight, you have this AIA document, which has been reviewed by the city attorney. Also, a slight sea change in the way we are doing business here. In order to do the type of pay applications required under this AIA document, sorry, lost my train of thought there for a second, essentially Spencer Architecture, who has been involved in this project to start, becomes the city's architect to review pay applications going forward. So they help with the design phase, working with Alcon as a contractor to them, and they will be our contractor on the CIA document. So all the pay requests will go through them, they'll do inspection services, those kind of things will be certified for us, which is what the state of Colorado requires, is what DOLA requires. So that's where we're at in the project, we're essentially, we have contracted out different parts, so essentially fifty percent, almost exactly, of the project's done, fifty percent's left, and this is, in order to make everything clean for DOLA, that we follow all their rules and regulations, which are not particularly humorous, but very precise, that is why we have this contract in front of the city councils.
So this contract covers what's coming due, but not necessarily covered by grants or available projects? Is that right?
It would be covering the second half of the project, or the second four million, four forty-six, eight twenty, to the extent that fundraising is still ongoing. But three million dollars of that, or three point four, or however it's going to work out, comes from the city's lease purchase dollars and a million dollars from DOLA. So the fundraising will continue, we're not quite at the exact point we'd like to be, but we certainly have coverage for the contract.
So how far along is that fundraising? I mean, just in general?
Just in general?
Roughly in committed funds were a little over eight point one million pledged, well, either in the bank or pledged, and that includes the DOLA in that figure and the lease purchase. We are still in, as Forrest mentioned, a very active fundraising campaign, not only locally, but we have several grant applications out. One, we did get a formal limitation, actually yesterday, I guess we had two Coors did say we could submit, and, and then we're still waiting on the finalization, which is very key, of the Larry Reed estate that Franz was named beneficiary. And that, that one's, the unknown of that one then makes us, what do we ask for in the grant? And the accountant has, what they are waiting for is ten ninety-nines to come in, which should be in about now, and then make sure there's no changes in the tax code. And then they will disperse the balance of the estate to the project. And we look to that to be a pretty sizable amount, but they won't tell us because they don't, they don't want to give a city false hope. So it's kind of a determination.
And local checks, you know, Carla's been giving local contributions, I think about forty-five thousand dollars since the start of January, or fifty?
Actually, that December, since December, was over seventy.
Right, so.
And that, that last fundraiser campaign raised a little over seventy thousand. And again, I had a gentleman call today, they're kicking another ten, and it's just amazing. We talked to several other businesses locally that have not contributed, you know, they haven't said yes, but they haven't said no, so that's important.
Right, I mean, the local cash contribution's over five hundred sixty thousand dollars now.
Wow.
And it keeps running, so, so I just processed, well, I'm processing, I think, seventeen tax certificates of funds that came in in time for the twenty twenty year, and we've got contributions since, and then more coming. So the, the local population is still stepping up and sending in checks, which is great.
Can I, uh, and we just received five hundred dollars from one of our vendors at the trade show this week.
Wow.
Um, we can go up here officially, you want this, but, you know, on behalf of Franz, who there's me in this room, we would respectfully ask that council favorably consider this approval of this grant, or grant, contract, I grant my rights. That's all I knew, I wasn't a grant. But respectfully ask that you guys approve this contract, and we need to, you know, make sure we keep moving forward with it, we need to help Alcon out so that they can move forward with their subcontractors as this project develops. As you saw, that building just going up, we're, we're getting amazing comments at the trade fair yesterday, walking around to some of the vendors, one was Farm Credit, they had their, some staff in, you know, we have the local office here, but they had some of their main people from Colorado Springs, and they were just amazed at what's taking place at, at our small community. Whenever we talk to funders such as foundations, they're just amazed at the community sport, support that we've gotten. And in fact, Betcher Foundation used this project as cover for their annual report, is how, how much this project is going around the state of Colorado. We're getting, we're getting some good feedback.
And I finally add, Forrest and, and council, this allows us to move forward right now to be able to deliver you an eight point six million dollar project for the state of Alamosa on schedule.
Montavista.
Did I say Montavista? I, I, I've done that before here. If it makes you feel any better, I do it all the time on the other end of this spectrum. I say Montavista, and I shouldn't be saying Alamosa, but it, it assures that we go forward and we deliver that product that is very worthy of Montavista, so.
Okay, I think you answered my question already. Are we still on the, on target for the eight point six million price tag? Okay. And you said that we're currently sitting on about eight point one. When does that other half million, that last half million, that last five hundred thousand, when does that have to be paid?
Probably July, August.
Okay.
This is the build-out, so, you know, depends on whether, timing, all these other things, but July, August, you know, the, so special completion date, and they're kind of staggered, so there's the main event center, and then there's conference room, and that's the conference room, yeah, rooms. Conference part has always been lagging a little bit, and that's September seventeenth. So this will not be a hundred percent plate until a little bit after that, but special completion is geared for September seventeenth. So the, the fund spread here goes out until October, probably early November.
Thank you.
I think it's really impressive when you stood up and said just a few minutes ago that you reached eight point one. You know, five hundred thousand seems like a drop in the bucket after that.
And we have a volleyball auction off, so there's that. So, you know, that's on the cover.
We could do a whole movie with the Wilson kind of.
We, we could. And Montavista.
It was like, was it the Wilson of the, of the Pacahara or whatever?
Yeah.
So, we, we can make the work.
We can make the work. But I, I just, I want to thank all of you, and I, for all the work you've done, for the presentations you've brought in here, for the encouragement you've given, mostly I want to thank you for recognizing our community. I think that a lot of times our community as a whole may be overlooked by the contributions they do, but we've had those, please don't let me say this wrong, give a buck jars that have been around, you know, every one, every dollar that went in there that came from our citizens. We have a fantastic community, and what you have done is, is you have shone a light on that, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for being that unity and that, 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 the positivity that you brought along with the building. And the building's one thing, but the passion and meaning that you brought is fantastic.
And Martha, I can't tell you how many discussions kind of we had over that give it back campaign. We debated whether that was a good idea or not.
Oh, it was a great idea. She's awesome, maybe that's so much she could have did, I have missed it yet, but yeah.
Yeah, we've got more for him.
One thing I want to emphasize is you talk about the community, you're talking valley-wide. And, you know, we keep kind of thinking locally, but the people that have stepped up to the plate in all six counties, and even some of the people out of the valley that have stepped up to the plate, and it's been amazing, totally amazing. And you think about it, if it wasn't for the community, and the donations, and the grants and stuff, how would this building have gotten built? Would it have been possible? Think about that.
Oh, Carla would, and Kathy would have made it up.
But it's amazing that the counties that have stepped up to the plate, all the way from Castilla Caneos, middle, Alamosa's watch, it's amazing, and the people in those counties, so our hats off to the entire valley. It's good. Thanks.
I did a, made a presentation trying to get some more funding as well, and that was one of my main comments was, we're talking Montavista all the time, but this whole San Luis Valley is a community. We are literally away from the rest of the world. We're surrounded by mountains, so we're away from everybody. So it has been a blessing that this community from the north to the southeast to the west, that they've all stepped up and taken into this program. And I will say, there are several of you guys here, you guys know Kathy, Carla, Charlie back there, Scott, Jim, the chamber, have all been on this, trying to get this pushed through, and some of these folks have been on this for twenty years, Carla. I know I was up there board for eighteen, and I was pushing two years prior too, so this project's been something that has been struggling too for, sorry, twenty, twenty-five years to get this down.
Charlie has known the history of the facility better than anybody.
Just because I remember it being built.
It, 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 it is, and you know, as I'm sitting here and listening to the comments, when you look back at the eighteen hundreds, late, late part of the eighteen hundreds, Montavista was the hub of the San Luis Valley. When you look at all the marketing, you know, with farmers and stuff, and that, and you look at the old hotel, the three-story hotel you sit down here, across from the school and, and stuff, you see what a progressive deal, and, and how much of it centered around Montavista. Sky High Park has always been a hub for the events happening in, in the San Luis Valley. And I think this just cements the continuing drawing people to Montavista and the San Luis Valley. But it is a central location, and it is the, when you look at the hub of, of, of events happening, it's always been at, at Montavista, and, and a lot of it is Sky High Park.
And playing on some of that same theme, last year at the Potato Grain Festival, and I don't know if most of you know Gene Rodriguez, he's the regional manager for the Coors, and he made the statement that Sky High Park is the heartbeat of the San Luis Valley, or that facility is the heartbeat of the San Luis Valley. And it rings true when you look at it, and that piggybacked with what Charlie was saying. It, it literally is a heartbeat for our valley.
It is the pot of gold for the San Luis Valley.
And when we talk, everybody puts in state too, the contractors, Brian and Mark, those guys, they've stepped up to help us out too, and people don't know what they've done, they're in the background doing it, and we really appreciate it, because you guys have stuck your neck out for this project too, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Do you guys make it?
No, we thank you guys for your support. We live here as well, this is a valley-wide project, we're all in it together to get it finished up, so thank you guys also for your support and your advocacy.
I'm amazed quite often at what has been accomplished, we still have a hurdle, or what seems to be giving to be a smaller hurdle.
It's been tough to get to this point, but what these women have done, what Forrest has helped pull together, what we've done as a team, and, and the creative ways that have come around with funding and pulling it together and getting, keeping contracts so that we can keep going, and, and now seeing this final stretch, I, I just, everybody deserves a, a round of applause, because it's been a, quite a feat considering the year, last year had.
So do you stand in motion, Jennifer?
Yeah, not in motion, okay. Yes, we're in motion.
Based on that, oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor within, whichever counsel within that motion, you need to authorize the city manager as the city's representative to execute these contract documents.
Well, based on that presentation and my faith in, in the friends of Sky High, appreciation for all of their work in Alcon and everybody else, I move to approve the contract with Alcon for Sky High and authorize the city manager to sign what he said.
It's been moved in second to approve the AIA contract, and have the four, city managers sign the contract. Is there any more discussion?
Anita?
Mayor Proton Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the contract with Alcon for Sky High, and have the city manager execute.
Awesome, thank you.
Good.
We're coming to you.
No problem, Carla.
Carla.
No doubt.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mark, thanks Brian, appreciate you guys. Council committee, state commission, council reports. Dicker?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, I mean, we've turned up.
It's Tuesday night from five to seven P M. Grace and Mercy Baptist Fellowship will be holding a community-wide free soup night. It will be held at First Christian because they've got a little more space than we do, so come on by. Get some free soup.
Okay, Counselor Locke?
Thank you, Mayor Becker. I think that we have had a wonderful, positive community again. And I need to get into some of this. I want to address not only the most recent letter to the editor, but the other ones that we see today. Counselor Johnson, in your letter to the Baptist Courier and Herald blocked again, and you erroneously lay your failures on the pardon staff while taking no responsibility for your own actions. The letter states that this council is ready to override this blatant in-your-face, win or take all demand, et cetera, unquote. First of all, there was no such command, counselor, so that's untrue. As your statement violated Article X, Section One of the city's Code of Behavior and Principles for City Council Members, which states that an individual council member may not speak or act for the council except when formally given such authority for specific purposes by the council. Such authority will be carefully stated and ordered not to conflict with authority delegated by the city manager. By making the statement, this council is ready, since you were not authorized to speak or act on behalf of the council in this instance, violates that code of behavior. Further, you indicated that your attempt to revisit the city manager's contract is blocked by a Roberts rule, quote, dug up by the staff, unquote. Roberts rules of order are specifically called out in the city's procedure and rules of order for the city council, and it regulates the manner in which the council follows parliamentary procedure. You cannot blame your failure nor your ignorance on, of procedure on the staff. In fact, they're hired and they're paid to help you, to help me, to help all of us, the rest of the council and citizens of this city. In the case of your purported citizen's petition, the management and staff had nothing to do with the failure of this action on your part as you have claimed. You were given the rules by a staff number, by a staff, a number of times. And those rules are part of state statute. Again, you can hardly blame the staff for your inability, or maybe unwillingness, to follow state law. So not only did you start an illegal petition, but you put citizens in peril by having them collect signatures. If I were one of the people that believed the untruths that you have spoken and that you have written, I would be extremely disappointed that you have shown your information to be untruthful and malicious. You also have a number of quotations in the letter to the editor, one which says, suck it up suckers, et cetera. Those were your words. Would you quote, but you cannot attribute it to anyone. The second quote you have is, we want ours, et cetera. And it's funny because on the web, even your own website, you say, in quote, in quotation marks again, which means that someone had to have said it. I want mine, et cetera, as a quote, which you even said you couldn't attribute to anyone. You could, you can't confirm it. So, you know, that makes this just common rumor mongering. So my rhetorical question to you, because I do have the floor, so I'm not asking for answer, is why even say this or print it if no one said it? Again, rhetorical, I'm not asking you to answer. Clearly, this was never uttered and is a piece of fiction, which apparently is your forte and used frequently to incite anger and distrust towards your fellow council members and city staff. Another statement which you have made over and over is either designed to be misleading or you simply don't understand the math. You've stated numerous times that the city manager received a twenty-two percent wage increase that equates to twenty thousand dollars. For this to be true, the starting wage would have been ninety-nine thousand, which it wasn't. And if you paid attention to the extensive discussion the council had, you would know that the wage at the time was one hundred five thousand, one hundred twenty-one, and the actual increase was only fifteen percent. The kind of mistake could cause a great deal of concern about someone who wants to oversee the city's employee wages and be our mayor. Along with this, you continue to question the finance director's statements and accuse her, basically accuse her of lying regarding the wage of the city manager and the city, for the city of Alamosa. At the January seventh meeting, the finance director clearly stated in her presentation and memo that the one hundred thirty thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars included base and taxable stipend, not benefits, and included as, as an attachment to that memo, the information submitted by the city of Alamosa. There was no effort to justify the salary of our city manager, but clearly there to provide facts. The main, the majority of this council voted to apply an adopted policy when we approved our city manager's new wage and contract. You also seek to try and separate the city's law enforcement employees from the rest of the city's employees. On the one hand, you say the city manager should only make eighty percent of what the Alamosa city manager makes. Well, our police officers make an average of ninety-five percent of what Alamosa police officers make. Are you really suggesting that our officers should take a pay cut? That would be unspeakable. And please keep in mind that our PD are indeed not separate from the rest of the city staff. They are a valued department and should therefore have the same care given to their wages as the rest of the staff. You also mentioned the city should consider a full-time fire department. This money that brought up has been not even brought to the city council before the fire department. Or has, or have anyone since I've been on, since I've been on the council, you have any idea how much money this would cost the taxpayers? Currently, the fire department is funded through a special district tax, so that would then be the implication on this revenue source. More than likely, this revenue source will go away because it's no longer been, it's still under our special district. And how would you parse rural fires and city fires? All things I'm sure you haven't considered. Conservative quick estimates are somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand to one point four million a year. Our current police department budget is one point six million. One wonders what city departments would be cut to fund this new, this new fire department. You also claim that it's the city's responsibility to complete the Faith Inkling Memorial and Veterans Park. That was a joint project with Montevista Community Fund. The city sponsored a GoCo grant to build bathrooms, provide benches, other small items. And under that grant, those things, under that grant have already been fully executed. The Montevista Community Fund is responsible for the remainder of the project and have not made any further requests to the city about the project. So you're just pulling this stuff out of, I don't know where you're pointing from. If the project has needs, those needs can come for the council.
What you're pointing, Mr. Mayor. This is about announcements, not about attacking individuals.
Counselor Locke, has the floor, Gary.
I know she does.
You had your turn and she's got to finish up her turn.
Well, if you want to do that, then we'll face a time for rebuttal. I, I'm not.
We have an executive session, so.
I'm, I'm, if this is a time for making announcements, it's not a time for presenting what you feel about somebody else without an opportunity.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor Locke, has the floor. Does your thing?
God's, God's time, just wanted to make my position clear.
As I was saying, if the project has needs, and we're back on the Faith Inkling Memorial Veterans Park, those needs can come in front of the council, let me discuss further. The Montevista Community Fund is not associated with the city. It is a separate entity, which does not, which, which does great, a great many things for the community. If they need the council assistance, we would decide on this with a, as a body with one voice together. In another of your finely written diatribes, you indicated that the cost of implementing the wage increases to our employees, which is an action that you made the motion for, and you voted to pass the resolution, not an ordinance, so that all of our employees would benefit, was four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The actual cost, this may surprise you, the actual cost to the city was about two hundred and fifty thousand. So you were over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the dishonest over the course of three fiscal years and was disclosed, and this was disclosed on March twenty-first, twenty nineteen, in the city council meeting by independent consultant. Yes, I did watch the video on YouTube, and so should the members of the public who want to question this. You also claim that staff performed the wage study and drew up a plan. Not a false claim. In actuality, you sat in on the meeting where the plan was presented by Louis Laszlo the second, a consultant with employers' council who has about forty years of H R experience. When asked by Mr. Laszlo, do you have any questions about the contents or if he could clarify anything for you? You indicated you did not. And again, in fact, you, you said, that seems pretty thorough to me, to the best of my recollection. And then you stated that the information provided was thorough. And at the next city council meeting, after having two weeks to review the documents, you made the motion to pass the resolution. Staff has merely followed the direction of council implementing a policy vetted and adopted by this governing body and have offered to bring the consultant back to offer any further clarifications regarding that study. Adherence to policies, procedures, rules and guidelines include Roberts rules of order is important to the fair and equitable operation of the city of Montevista. It is our job as a governing body of the city to set policies, enact ordinances and create guidance for its operations. It is the job of the management and staff to operate the city under the direction of the city manager as stated in our charter. It is absolutely no one's job to break the laws. No one's job to offer illegal motions. It's no one's job to circulate and involve citizens in illegal referendums and petitions. It is not your job to spread false or untruthful information because you lost a vote. It is not our job to divide this community. It is not our job to threaten or risk lawsuits against our city, nor is it our job to open the city to such risks. It is not our job to continually block the path to progressing and returning Montevista to the thriving and prosperous city it once was. I know that we've all been provided with lots of information and we've all been trained as to what our jobs are and we have access to assistance so that we can do this to the best of our ability. Maybe a clear definition of what our job is not would be what, is what, maybe a clear definition of what our job is not would be more helpful to me. Thank you, there's my council report, I'm finished.
Okay, we have executive session. For a conference with the city, town attorney, city attorney, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under C R S section two four six four zero two four B. I'm going to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under C R S section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four B.